Good morning, everybody. I think they're all muted, so I can't hear anybody. Well, welcome. Thanks for your patience. I was glad to be able to be at a ribbon cutting for a new business here in Roanoke that moved their corporate headquarters here to the city. So that's always good news. But I'm grateful to be with you all today. What we're going to do today is update you on several grants, funding and grants opportunities, as well as spend a little more time with our overall plan. And my hope is toward the end of our conversation today that we can just have an open conversation with each other about where to identify the points of intersection in the different areas and where you as community partners see those points of intersection, where there may be some gaps that we need to consider, and then our plan moving forward. We're it's exciting because we're at a point of really launching several initiatives and seeing action take place in our community that works alongside our law enforcement, all of our community partners, and our common desire to reduce violence in our community. So I'm gonna pull up our agenda. Oh, it sits on here. Yeah, it's all in the PowerPoint. So just a reminder about our purpose. Our purpose as a commission is to review, gather, review and study the issue of gun violence within the city of Roanoke, to make recommendations to city council for potential actions that we can take collectively to reduce the epidemic of gun violence within our community, and make recommendations for enhancing existing resources, and to aid the city in making and developing community partnerships to assist in the reduction of gun violence. Today, we're going to hear from Alicia Morrison, who is our senior crime analyst with the Roanoke Police Department I-STAR team. We're going to, I'm gonna share yesterday's announcement of gun violence prevention and intervention mini-grants. I'm gonna give you an update on our youth and gang violence community assessment, as well as the gun violence intervention program grant that we're applying for. And then I'm going to give an overview of our action plan. And we may or may not break into smaller breakout groups to discuss. We'll kind of see what our numbers look like in terms of participation when we get to that point, or we may just keep it open. So that's an overview of what we're gonna do today. I really think we'll probably be done in an hour. I always appreciate your time. But and as always, if you have questions or comments that you'd like to ask or share, just put them in the chat box, and we'll make sure to get those addressed. So it's my honor to, as always, welcome Alicia Morrison with the police department to share with us updated data, as we always do with these meetings. So Alicia, thank you for being here, and we'll turn it over to you. And I think you can just share from your screen.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having me. Let me go ahead and share my screen. And can everyone see that? Should be a couple of tables.
Yes, looks good.
Okay, thank you. So the table to the left-hand side of the screen shows the age demographics for both the offenders and the victims for our year-to-date incidents of gun violence. So that's January 1st through May the 12th. Now, you'll note that there, at the bottom here, it says that there are seven total offenders. There are six individual offenders, but one offender was responsible for both a homicide and an aggravated assault. So that's why that is, it says seven, but it's six individuals, seven offenses. And then for the victims, we've had a total of 21 victims of gun violence year-to-date, 15 aggravated assault victims, and six homicide victims. And that is the age categories that those individuals fall within. Then on the right-hand side of the screen, we have incidents where victim was hit by gunfire for 2020 compared to 2021 year-to-date. So we've had 21 incidents of gun violence year-to-date compared to 18 at the same time last year in 2020.
Thank you, Alicia. I wanted to, I appreciate this age, the demographic by age breakdown because we, this affirms what we've been seeing an increase in. And as you all will note, particularly on the offender side, all of the offenders are between the ages of 11 and 25, youth and young adults, which is why our prevention and intervention efforts are so critical. When you go over to the victims, you will see that a majority of our victims are also in that age range of 11 up through 29. So that's why these efforts are so critical. And as you'll see a little bit later, when we get into the heart of our working plan, why we're taking the steps toward prevention and intervention that we are. Does anyone have any questions about about this information?
Real quick, while we wait on questions, this is the map that I always provide that just shows the visual representation of where those incidents of gun violence are occurring. The blue points on the map are an incident in which we had a fatal GSW that resulted in a homicide, and then a gunshot wound that did not result in homicide that was an aggravated assault. The black points on the map represent gunshot wounds only that were non-fatal, and the red points on the map represent the fatal gunshot wounds that resulted in a homicide.
Alicia, you can correct me if I'm not accurate in this, but it appears to me that year-to-date this year, we're seeing, we can clearly see from this map, a pretty concentrated area where these incidents are taking place. And one of our concerns is that we're seeing increased criminal activity and also highly concentrated areas of poverty within the city. And so we have to be able to address deconcentrating that poverty, creating initiatives that that reduce poverty and create opportunity, and in the long term will help decrease where we're seeing these incidents, and hopefully decrease them overall in the city. Is that accurate, Alicia?
I do not have poverty statistics. That's not something that I have. But there is definitely a concentration, as you can visually see on the map, of where these incidents are occurring. If there is somebody that's part of the commission that has access to poverty data, socioeconomic data, maybe we could collaborate and overlay that, but that's not something that I have access to, unfortunately.
That's something that I'd like for us to do. And so, and we have multiple community partners who have access to that information. And so as a follow-up to this today, we'll just work to bring you all together to do an overlay. I think that would be very informative for us and could help us better, create better strategies for addressing this. We can also do that with food deserts, with healthcare access, kind of all of the risk factors that we're aware of in the community. Any questions from anyone about this information that Alicia has shared with us today? As I always remind us, every one of these numbers, every one of these indicators on the map are a person. They have a family. They have neighbors. They're part of our community. When one person is injured or killed by violence, it impacts all of us. And the more we recognize that as a city as a whole, the better we can create responses to to address this. So I just always want to recognize the level of trauma. And though we're a smaller city compared to many cities that are dealing with gun violence, I think the impact is in many ways greater on us because of the size of our city and because of the intimacy of our city. So I just want to make that acknowledgement. Thank you, Alicia. We'll go back now to our presentation, and we'll go to the next. So yesterday, well, actually, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission had our monthly meeting on Tuesday at 5:45. And we approved prevention and intervention mini-grants. So I want to go over with you all what the specs are for those, and please share this out. We are going to be awarding $65,000 to local nonprofit faith-based organizations for activities designed for prevention and intervention of gun violence in our community. These will be awarded in $3,000 to $5,000 mini-grants with a focus on youth and young adults, with activities of the funds to be completed by August 31 of this year. Activities may include mentoring and sponsoring. An example of that is someone may be being mentored in learning a trade or in skills, and someone who sponsors may help take them to that next step, actually guiding them through, you know, establishing a business, or getting the licensing they need, or helping fund their success over a longer period of time. Education, training opportunities that may include conflict resolution, trauma-informed work, and youth employment, scholarships, youth employment programs and events. So those are just some recommendate, recommended areas. We encourage, we were, we're going to make sure that any of these grants, while they may be an ongoing activity that a nonprofit is currently doing, there does need to be a component that addresses prevention and intervention of gun violence directed toward youth and young adults. I just want to be clear about that. Okay, you can go to the next slide. Eligibility. Organizations must be located within the city of Roanoke and be nonprofit 501(c) organizations or other duly organized nonprofits in good standing as of May of this year. Because we're making these available for summer, it's a very quick turnaround, but applications must be received by 11:59.59 PM on May 21st, which is next, a week from today. There is an online form. You see the link here. That form is also available on the Gun Violence Prevention Commission webpage on the city website. And if you go to the homepage for City of Roanoke, you'll also see information about the grant that was sent out through the alert system yesterday. It should be on the homepage, and you can click there, and that will also take you directly to the link. Along with the online form, there's a place to upload detailed expenditures of your proposed project, and you'll also need to add an organizational W9. Can we look at the chat? Yeah, Jim, did that answer your question? Okay. We will also, I will also make a point to send out the announcement and the link to all of our working groups and all the participants today, so you'll have direct access to that. And we're gonna show you what it looks like now.
Can you guys see it? I might have to stop sharing my screen. Can you see the the grant form, or are you just seeing the PowerPoint?
All right, just the PowerPoint. All right, we're gonna pull out of that and then show you the actual page.
Can you see it now?
Okay, great. Right. So it's a very basic template, should be very easy to fill out. If 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 you are, we also encourage collaboration. So if you have, you or anyone has any questions about this, you can feel free to contact me. You see my phone number there, or you can reach out through my city email. Angie's away this week, but she'll be back Monday. And she'll also be available to answer any questions anyone may have about. Any other questions about that, the mini-grants at this point? I'm making Tiffany do a dance today. All right. Okay. I want to update you on our youth and gang violence community assessment. Roanoke is one of seven localities in Virginia to receive funding. This will be conducted during the summer and completed by September 30th of this year. Our focus is on hearing the voices of youth and families on realities, and assessing the impact of violence, and how we can prevent and intervene to reduce violence. So we will be working with a consultant, either an individual consultant or an organizational consultant, to help us administer these, this assessment, to create the survey tools. There will be an online, online survey, as well as paper surveys, as well as the option for people to talk over the phone. We're looking for trusted community partners who have relationships with youth. We want to reach as many youth as possible. We recognize that many youth are in very vulnerable situations and want to ensure that they have a safe space to talk about some of these issues. So we want to create those opportunities. So any of you who work directly with youth and would like to partner with us to make sure we're reaching as many youth as possible in our community, we'll be reaching out to you. Please also reach out to us so that we can work together. I think next, as soon as we confirm funding has been received, we'll, we'll be announcing next steps to move forward with this. Go to the next. We are also finishing up a grant that's connected with the community, the youth and gang violence community assessment. The state issued a gun violence intervention program grant. The deadline for that is next Monday, the 17th. We're finishing that up, but I want to share with you what we are including in our request to be a recipient of that grant. Our locality is eligible to apply, apply for up to $500,000 over two years. Our intention is to hire a youth and gang violence prevention coordinator, as well as two street outreach employees, who will work with our youth and gang violence prevention coordinator, and also our reset coordinator, Lloyd Merchant, to help expand our reach into the community. Go to the next slide. So a portion of the grant can be allotted for personnel. The other portion needs to be directed toward community-based organizations. And we've identified six key areas that we want to focus on that address both prevention and intervention directly and indirectly. The first is violence prevention curriculum pilot programs, which our education working group is, has already piloted one, but we're going to continue that effort. Basic trauma and resiliency training for the community at large. Conflict resolution training for up to 100 credible messengers and trusted community representatives. Credible messengers are persons who have emerged through the justice system, who are on a new pathway, and because of their life experience, and because of their, their shift in priorities, the justice system will be able to confirm with us that they're credible messengers. And then we will also want to reach out to trusted community representatives who already have good relationships in neighborhoods and our communities that can help through conflict resolution. The other three areas are mentoring programs. These may be existing mentoring programs or new programs that may develop that focus directly on working with youth and young adults, and also middle-aged adults and older adults who have the skill set to really mentor our young people into pathways of opportunity. We also want to support urban farm initiatives. Many of these are already underway, and we, and they're evidence-based programs. We're already seeing the benefits of these in terms of of helping youth understand the importance of, you know, digging in the earth, planting, nourishing, harvesting, and then learning to be entrepreneurs, to not only help feed their families, but also to feed neighbors, and address some of the food desert issues that we have in parts of our city. The last area that we'll focus on is youth employment opportunities. We want to make sure that our students have opportunities for, to learn skills, to learn trades, that not only help them, but also help our city. And so we're focusing on youth employment opportunities as another key area where community-based organizations can can help us. Okay, let's go up to the chat box and see what we've got there. Thank you, Patrick. We appreciate Parks and Rec being here, and look forward to that continued partnership with you all. All right, before we get into our action plan, let me ask if anyone has any questions or observations about the gun violence intervention program grant? All right, then we will move on. I want to remind us why we're doing this work, and why community-based violence intervention programs work. They have the potential to deter high-risk individuals from engaging in violent acts involving firearms. They help to interrupt and resolve potentially violent and or deadly disputes before they occur. And they connect citizens with opportunities to education, employment, mental health, social, housing, and family services. This is what we're doing. This is why it's important, and we all believe in this. And Roanoke is rich in the resources that we have to work together to reduce violence in our community. So as we go into the presentation of this plan, I want you all to think about these three questions. At the end of the presentation, we'll have an open conversation about these three questions. So the first question is, what are the intersections of effort in our plan, and how can we best support the plan going forward? The second is, what gaps do we see, and how can we address them in the plan? This is a really comprehensive plan. We're, we're phasing in the stages at which we can introduce different components of this plan. And but as you'll see, they're very interrelated. And then third, what else do we need as community partners to support and implement this plan? So for example, if you're a community partner on this call today, and you're observing this plan, what are some things you need organizationally from us? Maybe it's an MOU. Many of these programs are going to require that. Maybe it is clarity about what your role will be as a partner. Maybe it is the sharing of an effort that is already underway in your organization that you need for us to know about. Whatever that is, this is a place to talk about that. All right, now I'm gonna dive into the plan. Our first area of focus is safer and healthier neighborhoods. Within this, we have four key areas that we're working on. The first is our interactive community storytelling public art project. This will include a mobile interactive chalkboard that will be taken to different parts of our community. We're hoping this will go all over our city, but we particularly want to start out in areas that are most highly impacted by incidents of gun violence. And we want to talk with youth, children, families, neighbors, about how they perceive and experience safety in their neighborhoods, what these acts of violence, what the impact of the, of these incidents are on them, and and how we can take that information to strengthen the work that we're doing regarding prevention and intervention. The second phase of this will expand what we learned in phase one through personal interviews, and hopefully an interactive GIS map where where people can actually, you know, click on this interactive virtual chalkboard, as well as real chalkboard, to hear stories of people that live throughout our city, and what their ideas are for safety and health, and how we can best address reducing violence. The second is a rollout of our educational video featuring the book, The Little Blue Truck. This is in video format, and we are hoping to share this for Sorry, got a little distracted. This will be rolled out through Roanoke City Public Schools, and we're just waiting word on how that will be rolled out. We're working on bringing back our annual Roanoke Remembers event. It's an opportunity for us to hear the stories of impact of families who've lost loved ones, or experienced incidents of gun violence through injury. We did this two years ago. It's an opportunity for healing, for the community to come together and to offer support. And then finally, bridging the community gap walk, which takes place every December. So I'll ask Tim or Nicole, who are leading up this effort, if you have anything that you would like to add.
No, Joe, I think you summarized that very helpfully. We're, we have a subcommittee meeting on the calendar for next week, and we really, really are eager to get on the other side of COVID and begin this, these projects in earnest.
Yes, thank you, Tim. All right, our next focus area is increasing strong community partnerships through education. And there are four key areas that we're looking at here. One is, we just piloted positive, and this is positive action, not positive impact, my apologies. So we piloted a program through Weston Center Boys and Girls Club, Presbyterian Community Center, and this was facilitated by Family Service of Roanoke Valley. I think Karen is on the call today. I may ask you, Karen, if you have any updates on this that you could just briefly share with us. We're gonna continue to look for and explore violence prevention curriculums that we can pilot in the community. We're testing out some different curriculums right now to see what's most effective. We are going to be hosting two basic trauma training community events, one on Thursday, June 24, and one on Tuesday, July 27. These will be for anyone in the community. There will be a process to register so that we have a clear idea of how many are attending. As soon as we have details on the times for these, we'll let you know. Also, we're looking at the possibility of having both an in-person and hybrid offering of these. So we'll keep you posted on that as well. The fourth thing is, Roanoke City Public Schools are preparing to send out the Locked Guns Save Kids letter and pledge. This was created by a group of This was created by a group of citizens in our community a number of years ago. And it's a pledge that families can sign to lock guns and save kids. Haley Poland with Roanoke City Public Schools is helping to coordinate this effort. And this should be coming out in in it will be coming out before the end of school. So please watch for that. And it will be the pledge will be available online as well as in print. So Karen, before we go to the next, Karen, is there any information you can share just in brief on the most recent curriculum that was piloted?
The Positive Action Curriculum was was piloted in middle schools. Family Service has done it for many years in for elementary school students, but we haven't done it in many years with middle school. So we piloted it at middle schools, the centers that Joe discussed, and it was kind of a mixed bag that the I don't know that the at last that I've touched base with youth development, they hadn't put the survey data together, so I don't know. We asked, we surveyed both the adults who observed the groups and the children who went through the groups. So I don't have that survey data, but the children, I think, in general, what was observed is that the youth, what they got out of it was mainly because of their relationships with the facilitators. That the facilitators, the adult mentors in the room were the the key to getting the message across. That's, I think, what the data is going to say.
That makes sense. And and it's probably also accurate to say that every setting is going to be different.
We saw that in those three settings, and these are three groups that we already provide another curriculum to, so we have relationships with them. But their reaction to this, these two lessons that they were provided on these two separate occasions were, you know, we kind of looked at standalone in a moments in time, and it was very different. The there were groups, it's very word heavy, this curriculum. And so one of the groups had to be read to. What we had to adapt as we went for the developmental and academic abilities of the the children in the group. So it did require some expertise on the facilitator's part that I'm not sure Boys and Girls Club feedback was, we're not sure that just anybody could have done that. You know, we will have to have trained facilitators to provide this curriculum.
Thank you. Other questions that anyone has regarding this? Did you all catch how I put those cool periods before and after three and four on this? It's just testing, just testing y'all. Okay, let's go to the next. Reducing gang activity violence and incarceration recidivism. All right, we have been working to finalize a comprehensive gang reduction model to include specific strategies to raise awareness of and toward reducing gang activity and violence. And I'm going to review with you now the key areas of that plan. We have a much more detailed plan than I'm happy to share out with folks who are interested, but this captures the the key areas we're working on. And these are adapted from the the Juvenile Justice Gang Comprehensive Gang Reduction Model. The first area is community mobilization, where we will be working to engage community stakeholders to conduct a community assessment and to activate prevention and intervention strategies. The second area is opportunities provision. Through education, training, and employment programs, we will work to redirect gang involved youth and young adults to opportunities that will sustain them in a positive way throughout their lives. A social intervention is reaching out to gang involved youth to link them with supportive services. For example, conflict resolution, trauma informed care, youth employment, and other programs. Go to the next. Organizational change and development. This is where we look at policy and procedures designed to enhance access to services and funding to better address youth and gang violence. So if there are if there are policies or procedures that are prohibitive or creating barriers and obstacles to access to these services, we want to address those in a meaningful way to remove some of those barriers. And then suppression is really about engaging with community partners to increase positive activity in neighborhoods and communities to reduce criminal activity. We're seeing in communities where there has been a reduction in violence that more neighborhood groups, more community partners are out and walking in the community, getting to know neighbors, talking with them, engaging with them. I really want to commend our Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority for their initiatives to create walk and talk events. They currently have two, one at Lansdowne, which is every Thursday at four o'clock. Everyone is welcome. And also in villages at Lincoln on Tuesday afternoons at 5:30. These can be done by any neighborhood groups, wherever you live. And and can include just sharing information about things that are happening in your neighborhood. There is a a vaccination clinic that the Housing Authority is partnering with our local health department for this Saturday or next Saturday, May 22nd, and the response to that has been very positive. So these are the kinds of collaborative efforts, and the more visible these kinds of things are, they all make a difference in reducing crime in our city. Okay. The the other part of that is incarceration recidivism, and I just want to say that we're working with our Roanoke City Jail as well as our regional correctional facilities, as well as our our court services to to reduce the barriers for returning citizens to to have sustainable employment, to give back to their community in in ways that that are a good match for them. Many of these folks might become credible messengers, but they might also be able to serve the community in other ways, and we really want to to focus on that. And and we want to make sure that anything we do, there there tends to be a reality in funding that we want to get, we want to see that initial success. So for example, if somebody you know, comes back into the community and we give them the services they need for one year, and we call that a success, but then the funding stops and we can't really continue to sustain that that success. We want to sustain that success, not just for returning citizens, but for youth, for young adults, for anyone in our community that's experienced barriers to success and opportunity. We want to make sure that that we have the services in place over an extended period of time to ensure that success. And and another reason I reiterate this is because we have a wealth of services for youth up to age 18, but after age 18, there is a drop off in terms of services. And so we really want to focus on that as a community to enhance and increase those those opportunities. So please keep that in mind. All right. Increased coordination of city services and rapid response. Go to the next. We are in the process of finalizing and launching a coordinated rapid response effort for extended wraparound support of individuals and families experiencing trauma. This is where we want our our hospital, our our first responders, anyone in the healthcare industry that 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 deals with trauma, as well as other community partners to be part of that effort. And so one of the things were that Stacy and Shakira as facilitators of this working group are looking at is is how to bring those partners into collaboration so that we can move this forward. Another part of this is continuing to work with our Reset Community Mitigation and Volunteer Coordinator and team headed up by Lloyd Merchant. They do initial 24 to 48 hour onsite response in areas of our city experiencing trauma. They also share some resources. Our rapid response effort will add to those resources. We also work directly with Fed Up, families experiencing deliverance under prayer, but this is a group of predominantly women and mothers in our community who've experienced loss of loved ones or the impact of trauma. And this is where we can assist with getting families the support they need in terms of safe housing, memorial expenses, food, mental health support. And this is for a longer term support effort. So these are all part of of our coordinated rapid response effort. Stacy or Shakira, I'm not sure who's who is on the the call today, but do either of you want to add anything to that? All right, you're both on, so Shakira, I'll have you go first and then Stacy.
I was just going to say that sounded good. As far as an overview goes, and I'll just say
We lost to Shakira.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you, Joe. I think that pretty well covered it.
Shakira, are you still there? Can you check the chat box for me? Okay, thank you. Thank you both. All right, you go to the next. All right, and increased community engagement through marketing and communications. We are in the process of finalizing our marketing and communications plan and will be creating an RFP to secure a local marketing agency that can help us develop a marketing campaign for violence reduction in the community. And we're hopeful that that we can get Phase One of this launched in in the next couple of months. All right, that is a very fast, but I hope helpful overview of our action plan. And this is just a refresher of the questions. And I'll and I'll, I think I'll just open this up since we've we've got 20, I think we can bring the screen back up and Okay, and Tiffany's going to drop the questions in the chat.
Good morning or good afternoon.
If you could identify yourself, that'd be great.
How are you doing? My name is Douglas Pitzer. This is my first time in the meeting. I want to say hello to everyone. I just wanted to add that everything sounds amazing. And for number one, when we were talking about the safer and healthier neighborhoods, working in Addison, William Fleming, and a couple other schools, the kids right now are getting real accustomed. They like using QR scans. I wasn't sure if anyone was familiar with them.
Yeah.
I was thinking if you could put QR scans on the on the bulletin or the board that would be used for chalking the ideas, and those can be portals to maybe additional information, resources, et cetera. Kids will be real keen to just, they see a QR scan right now and they get kind of interested in seeing what's behind it. So they're always curious to scan it right now. So that could be another portal for just giving them information that's very convenient and quick to gain.
That's an excellent idea, Doug, and really critical. We, you know, part of what we want to do is is learn what kids are looking to for their information, where they're turning, and be able, particularly in our communications efforts, to reach them in those ways. So I know you work directly with a lot of our kids, and so that wisdom is really helpful to us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the first question is, what are the intersections of effort in our plan and how can we best support the plan going forward? I'll just open the floor at this point for any questions or comments from any of you regarding that.
I I don't know, Joe, are you talking about intersections within our working groups or because I want to talk about youth services?
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we're not overlapping or duplicating efforts. I I think they're pretty I think we're pretty clear on on the different focus areas, but I just wanted to make sure, you know, for those of us who've kind of been in the inside of this looking out, we need the folks look from the outside looking in to help us see if we're if we're overlapping efforts in some places that we don't need to. So Karen, your point that youth services are are kind of integral to all of these things.
Yeah, our Youth Services Committee Citizens Board, I'm just, I I know that it's kind of been like on the fringes of discussion, but I think we really, at this point, need to think about how we can help to implement the assessment.
Yes.
Maybe with our our summit that we do. And I I think that we probably, whoever is whichever work group or city person, if they could come to our next Youth Services Committee, I think that it might be a worthwhile conversation to have, how we can help support the gun violence work at Youth Services.
Yeah, I I would be glad to attend your next meeting if you can let me know when it is.
I'll get you, Angie will get with you.
All right. But that's a great point. And that's that's exactly what we're looking for. I know that in a recent conversation with Roanoke City Public Schools, there was conversation about having some kind of a a rally or event or summit connected with resources sometime this summer, and I suggested to them that they coordinate with you all as the Youth Services Citizens Board. Because together you could really reach a broad a broader, you could create a broader reach with our students.
We had, we had gone to having our youth summit after school started, but I'm not sure that's going to fit with the assessment timeline. But I think that we could move it. I I think this is really important, and I think it would be a good rallying point. So I think we really do need to get the gun violence people and the city schools and the youth services together to talk about that.
That that'd be great.
Karen, I'd love to be, get that information too. I think the safer neighborhoods, the questions that we're asking on that would make a great workshop at the youth summit.
That would be great, Tim.
Other questions, comments on our first question about the intersections? All right, then I'm going to shift to number two, which is what gaps do you see and how can we address them in the plan? I think the reality is we're always, you know, as we do this work, we're going to identify gaps. I think the biggest gap that we're aware of that we alluded to is the the degree, the extent of services we have for young adults at between that age 18, 19 to, you know, 25 to 29. That's an area we really need to work on. So we're aware of that gap, but I'm curious if you're if you're seeing some others that we need to look at.
Hello, one thing I wanted to add. Earlier in the meeting, there was a question about getting some data for the poverty. When I used to work for the Goodwill, they had the Moda Grant and listed within that had information about that area, and it had actual income data and some other information. And it was actually pretty shocking when compared to other areas of Roanoke. So I think that would help fill in some information of some needs.
Great, thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Well, I know that that Well, I know that, that Carillion has a health needs assessment that the new assessment is going to include some information and questions about violence reduction or experiences of violence. So that will be helpful. They also, you know, help address the food insecurity and healthcare access. And then United Way has done pretty extensive work as well as TAP on what the poverty realities are in the city, so we can, we can bring them into the mix as well. All right, well, let's, let's turn to item number three, question three. What else do we need as community partners to support and implement this plan? So this is particularly, I know what some of you are going to say.
Besides money?
Money, money, money. That's, that's part of the reality. I, I want to say that one of the things I, that is, that I've seen change in a positive way in the 20 years I've been in Roanoke is the degree to which our community-based organizations work with each other. When I moved here, there was what we call a lot of the silo effect. We were kind of doing our own thing. And while I think there's still some of that in, to the extent that we, all of us are doing really good programs and providing really essential services in our community, but because of the, the amount of those, we don't always know what each other is doing. So I think to the degree that we can better communicate those as a way of strengthening the supportive work that we do, that's, that's a plus. And that also can increase our collaborative work. So I want to commend all of our community-based organizations on the good work that's being done and, and the collaborative approach. And, you know, we're, we're not here to reinvent the wheel. We want to work with existing organizations that are already doing violence prevention work. But we want to help amplify that and, and support it in ways that are meaningful. Anyone else have?
Oh, I, yeah, I have one thing. I'm Kevin. I'm with the Rescue Mission here for Lee Clark representing us. You know, for that third question for what else do we need as community partners? I was actually at the Southeast Action Forum meeting earlier this week, and they were discussing revitalization efforts in that area and how it has shifted the demographics to where it was an older community to where it's now a younger community. And I think that that is critical in making sure that these affected areas are really getting the attention they need and therefore affecting the level of income. And, you know, what poverty, whether we have the statistics or not, poverty affects gun violence and crime in areas. And so focusing on these distressed areas will certainly, I think, affect violence overall in the community.
Thank, thank you, Kevin. I think that's an important insight. And, and it also reminds us that there, there are lots of different layers to this work that we do. And, and, and the intersections of what makes our, where we find our citizens vulnerable and where we find our, our city vulnerable and our region. So whether it's, you know, the opioid epidemic or gun violence epidemic or COVID, I mean, those are, those are major things that we're seeing the impacts of. But then we've got, you know, people who are vulnerable to homelessness. Some, sometimes that's situational, sometimes it's based on circumstances, sometimes it's chronic. And, and that, that intersects with this work. We, we realize that, as you said, Kevin, income, income disparity is, is, is another issue. The number of families that we have that are working multiple jobs to make ends meet. The, the Alice Household Data, when you add that on top of the, the poverty rate, you know, I've, I've seen data that says over 50% of households in the Roanoke Valley are at risk of not making ends meet and, and really struggling to do so. So all of those things are part of this work that we're doing. And to the degree that we can increase positive activity and opportunities in these distressed areas, it does make a difference. A profound difference. So the, the work the city's doing with, with HUD and CDVG funds now in the Belmont Fallon area, previously in Melrose Orange, those are critical. But, and, and we have to find ways to sustain that work beyond the five years that it's, that it's focused in those areas. So all of this ties in together. Thank you for that, Kevin, and thanks for being with us today. I'm totally going to put her on the spot right now, but Dr. Morrow, I don't know if you're. Thank you for joining us today. I had a chance to fill in Dr. Morrow, who's the Director of the Roanoke City and Allegheny Health Districts and our local health department. I had the opportunity to fill her in and some of her staff on the work that we're doing and the points of intersection. It's so critical because this is, this is a public health matter as well. And, and, and we want to make sure that, that our health department and our, our hospital systems are all part of this work. So Dr. Morrow, sorry to put you on the spot, but I wondered if you had anything that you'd like to add or any insights that you bring that you'd like to share?
I, I think just to reaffirm that, that I, like you, view gun violence and all of the consequences beyond the individual who's directly impacted by gun violence, all of the, the collateral damage that is done to a, to the fabric of, of society when we have gun violence. You know, I absolutely view it as a public health threat. And so I think that the only, the only pertinent message that I have at this point is that I'm happy to be at the table and am committed to doing what we can as a local health department to assure that there is success.
Thank you. Really glad to have you here today. Anybody else have any, any comments or questions you'd like to share? Please encourage folks to submit a proposal for the mini-grants. This is a really tangible way that local nonprofits and faith-based organizations can really make a difference to help us do this work. And then we will keep you posted as we learn more about our Gun Violence Intervention Program grant. The nice thing about state funding is that once it's submitted, the turnaround time for notifying us and then sending out the, the funding is very quick. So we appreciate that and that, that's a big help. So thank, if there's no other questions, please feel free to reach out. If you do have any questions, we will meet again in June to give you an update, particularly around the Community Youth Assessment, because I hope by that time we'll have a plan on how that's going to be implemented. As well as we may have news by then about the, the state grant. So thank you all for being here today. We appreciate your time and all the great work you do in the community and have a good day.